Calling a meeting to order, rise and fulfill the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of our Republic, our which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, pick the call, please.
Councilmember Campfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. I'll look for a motion for the consent agenda tonight, and we'll have the closed session minutes that were shown before the meetings.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support. Any discussion? Sue.
Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen come, freedom's not in the agenda.
Good evening, Perry Beecham, 924 Riverside Drive. I just want to thank the council for the vote of confidence in doing the floor covering. We're going to finish up with Chief Bukla's office tomorrow, and then the hallway, the base will get put on that soon as, soon as we get that painted. So I just want to thank you, and it was a seamless working with the staff and everything in the city was one of the easiest procedures, jobs that I've done recently. I want to thank Rich. Diane Lauer mentioned, saw that the cones were all gone on Hudson, and I had mentioned to him, and thinking that it was the city, and it wasn't, it was the county, and I know that Rich made a phone call to the county, and all the cones and barricades and everything are gone on Hudson, so thank you for that. And the other is, it's coming up, even though it's so-called middle of the summer, but the Pink Arrow events are kicking off, and if you've read the ledger, buyer's guide, and firstlook, Lowell'sfirstlook.com.
Dot com.
Dot com.
Dot com.
You'll see the perseverance stories in there, and Community Day this year will be August 16th, that'll be the first time you can get your shirts, and get them soon, because the game is going to be this year on the 30th, and the Thursday before Labor Day, as before, it's usually been the first week, or the first Friday after, but it's going to be before this year, so look forward to that, and go pay care of. Thank you.
We need to do the keychains and the land nudes and all that stuff again this year, too, or just the shirts, or we don't have any?
Oh, we'll have all that good stuff.
Perfect.
We've got, we've got a little bit, another addition. We've got yard signs that you'll be able to purchase as a Pink Arrow supporter, and one side's, you know, the black color with the pink on it, the other side's the white, so you get to have your little bit of choice with that. So, again, those will be, we're going to sell those for $10, and again, all proceeds that we raise stays locally, and I also just want to say that there's no paid positions with the Pink Arrow, it is 100% volunteer, and we help support Gilda's Club, and two scholarships, Dr. Donald Gerard Scholarship and the Captain Talis Scholarship, and then also for those that are on cancer journey, we help support that monetarily, so, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Anybody else? All right, old business is empty, we'll move to new business, 55A, Brownfield Redevelopment. Michael.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. A few months ago, I approached the City Council about the establishment of a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the entire city. The City Council indicated support for doing this at that time. I also suggested the Downtown Development Authority serve as the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board, since they already had many of the tools in place to address projects that may come along. In addition, for the amount of projects which would come about to the authority, I did not see the need to form an additional board with members, when a board might only impede once or twice a year. When I presented this to the Downtown Development Authority, they voted to accept this task. There are seven steps required by state law to establish the authority, and I can go over those in a minute. For the council to take the first step, for the council to take the first step towards establishing the authority, you would need to adopt or approve a resolution declaring the intent to establish a Brownfield Authority, and to designate the boundaries of the Brownfield Redevelopment Zone, and to set a date and time for a public hearing. As we discussed city, we discussed previously, we would establish the entire city as the Redevelopment Zone. This would give us flexibility to offer tours, tools for any possible development on the city limits. The public hearing would also be set from Monday, August 20, 2018, at 7:00 PM, City Council chambers. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve 2418 to declare the intent to establish a Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and to designate the boundaries of a Brownfield Redevelopment Zone, and set the date for the public hearing. Just so you're, just to reiterate, there's, like I said, there's seven steps that have to happen in order for a Brownfield Authority to be established, before they can actually accept what are called 381 Brown Plans, Brownfield Plans. This first one is what you would be doing tonight, where the City Council would adopt a resolution declaring intent to establish the Brownfield Authority, and to designate the boundaries of a Brownfield Redevelopment Zone, and that set times for the date and public hearing thereon. The city clerk would then publish notice of public hearing in the Lowell ledger, not less than 10 days before the public hearing. The City Council would hold a public hearing on establishment of the Brownfield Authority, and designation of the Brownfield Redevelopment Zone. The council then adopts resolutions establishing the Brownfield Authority, designating Brownfield Redevelopment Zone, and designating the members of the Board of the DDA as the Board of the Brownfield Authority. The city clerk would then file copies of those resolutions establishing the Brownfield Authority with her office and with the Michigan Secretary of State. From there, the Brownfield Authority would hold its initial meeting, adopting bylaws, selecting officers, appointing the executive director, administering the oath of office, establishing meeting dates and related matters, and then, from there, the City Council would approve the bylaws of the Brownfield Authority Board. So those are the seven steps that would have to happen before, if the Brown, if you did choose to do this, and before we could actually start looking at if there were proposals to come to, to the Brownfield Authority.
Would they be able to hold them with their regular, with our regular DDA meetings, or they have to be separate meetings? Sue, could you establish that in the bylaws?
I would establish it in the bylaws, but what you do, is you do it just how we do it with the zoning board, or the zoning board where we, we'll open into that session, that's how I would approach it, because there's no, there's no, I mean, those meetings, those could be held within the same time the DDA needs.
Any other questions for Mike down there? What's the motion for that, Resolution 2418?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2418. I'll support.
Any discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
All right, pass. Item B is the MERS actuarial report.
Yes, we just received our MERS actuarial report in June, and I gave you a copy of it, and I figured I'd do a presentation on it, but I tried to make it simplified in a way you could understand it. The actuarial report is 38 pages long, unless you are an accountant or an actuary, it's very hard to understand. So I took the information, and I broke, and I broke it down, just trying to explain to you how our situation is here. I also invited Sean Egan. Sean Egan is the business agent in Legal Counsel for IBEW, and we work together quite a bit on a number of issues, and pension has been one of them. So let's start with the slide. Power.
James Perry.
Let me start the first one.
So, just want to kind of explain different pension systems and what we have here in the city Lowell. There's your defined benefit and your defined contribution pension plans. There's also what's called a hyperplan, we'll get into that in a second. But, the defined pension, benefit pension will pay a retirement benefit based on years of service, and there's guaranteed, no matter what the investment returns are. The city has a defined benefit retirement plan for our employees. There's also the defined contribution, which is what we would call in the private sector the 401K. It allows the employer to contribute a percentage to the employee's retirement, and then the employee also contributes. This type of investment is subject to market fluctuations, and there is no guaranteed payout upon retirement. And it should be noted that the city currently does not provide this to any employees, whether in the city or in Lake Power. There's also the hybrid plan, which is a combination of reduced benefit pension mixed with a defined contribution component. Currently, our Lake Power employees who were hired after September 1st, 2012, have this, and I believe this is also in the, for new hires, and actually even the line and workers in the union as well. So those are, those give you just a little bit of an idea as to what we're, what we're kind of talking about here to begin with. So, if we go on to the next slide, the current, and I'm just speaking on the city's end, understand something, that the whole pension, whole actuarial reflects to Lake Power and the city together, but Lake Power has some different things in their pensions that they offer than we offer. So, I, I'm going to explain this, this slide into, into what the city offers their employees. So, the city pension system, we offer a benefit multiplier of 2.5%, which is, which would be a maximum of 80%, which is of your final average compensation, which is a three-year, your best three years out of your last 10. Our normal retirement age would be 60, however, you can retire at 55, if you have 25 years of service, or 15 years of service. If you meet one of those components, you are eligible for an early retirement. You would be eligible to invest in the pension system at 10 years, and the employees do contribute for a number of years, they didn't contribute anything, I would say for probably, I want to say for maybe the last eight or nine years, and if Steve knows better, the employees began contributing 5%, and beginning this past July, all employees now contribute 7%. And I'll kind of get into that in a second, about why, why that was done. So kind of explain it to you this way, so you have, the formula, as we said, is final average compensation times your years of service times 2.5, and that would be how much you would receive in your benefit. So for example, if you earned, if your final average compensation was $35,000, and you had 25 years of service, times a 2.5 multiplier, you would be receiving a $21,875 annual benefit, or $1,822.92 a month, for the rest of your, for the rest of your life, if you retired from the city. And also, if you, if you had, if you earned $65,000, actually I didn't, yeah, $65,000 times, times 30 years, times the 2.5 multiplier, it'd be $48,750, which, which would be your annual benefit, I don't know, equate to $4,062.50 a month. So that's how the pension plan spells itself out. Go to the next slide, please. Okay, so, I want to explain this to you, we are currently, we are currently, we just received our actuarial report this year, and we learned that our, that our amount funded that we have into the, into the system, we're now 64% funded, and now, I'll explain that in a minute, but we, we're 64% funded, where we were 65% funded, and about seven years ago, we were actually 77% funded. And what happened was in 2015, after the market crashed, the rate of return, for the return of investment on the pension system was reduced to 7.75%, and that actually lowered the city's amount funded from 73% to 66%. What happened was when they, when they lowered the rate of return, which they inflated for, MERS had inflated for a number of years, I believe it was about an 8.75%, but when the, when the market went down, with 2008, 2009, and we had, we had, we had, we had the over, basically, that's what we explained, we had the overinflated values, when that was reduced, that actually increased our unfunded liability, which I'll get to in a second. But, that did cause us some issues, and it's something that I'm going to talk about in a minute, but it's something that we still have to monitor. So, why are we here? Why are we in the situation that we're in? Well, in 2008, MERS changed from a rolling 30-year payment schedule to a realistic 30-year amortization schedule, and where, for example, where they set at the time, the baseline is in 2038, the pension needs to be funded at 100%. If the economy has another recession, it will put additional stress on the city to increase the contribution to meet the funding needs of the retirement system. And we also, we also have, what just came into effect last year was Public Act 202 of 2017, I'll talk about that in a second. But one of the things we want to make sure we do, is we want to make sure that employees who work hard for the city are rewarded with a pension that is fully funded. We also want to make sure we plan accordingly, so we don't need to make eliminating existing services to pay for this liability from the past. So, I want to kind of explain Public Act 2002 of 2017, and what this basically states is the, the actuarial accrue liability of a retirement pension system of the local unit of government is less than 60% funded, according to the most recent annual report, and if the local unit of government is a city, village, township, or county, the annual required contribution for all of the retirement pension systems of the local unit of government is greater than 10% of the local government, of the local unit of government's general operating funds, based on the most recent fiscal year. So currently, under this act, we do meet the 60% funded requirement. Currently, we operate on a $2.45 million general fund, that's before you would include any of the transfers that we make to the different funds, but we spend, I believe, I checked their numbers, we spend about, I want to say about $231,000 a year in pension costs, give or take, depending on the, on the year. So we're kind of close to that mark, but something that this, that this act hasn't taken into account, and I think they really need to reevaluate this, if they want, if they want to, if they want to do this correctly, is what this doesn't take into account, when you, when you do get to that, if you do get below that 60%, they look at only your general fund expenditures, but what they, what they fail to understand is that, for example, in most cities in the state, and we're no different, a number of our employees are not paid out of the general fund, they're paid out, for example, we have employees who work out of the water fund, the wastewater fund, the DDA fund, and so, those expenditures are counted towards the general fund requirements, when in actuality, they're not paid out of the general fund. So that's something that some communities in the state, when they just recently did their recent, when Treasury just went through and went through, their first list of communities that were not compliant with the state act, a number of communities have complained about that, that, look, we're, you're saying we're not funded, but we are, because most of these payments are being made from the, from those, from those enterprise funds, and, and in many arguments, they're claiming that they're creating, Treasury's creating an issue that really isn't there. So that's something that we're, with the new act, they're still, I think they're still looking at, hopefully, and could, could correct that as it goes forward. So, what happens if we don't meet this requirement? So, if we find at some point we don't meet this requirement, we would have to apply for a waiver for the unfunded status, which would be, where governing, just to make it simple, the governing body must approve a plan demonstrating the underfunded status being addressed, and must approve the waiver application. The state treasurer shall issue a waiver of the determination of the underfunded status of the local unit of government, and if the state treasurer determines that the underfunded status is adequately being addressed by the local unit of government. For any underfunded local unit of government that has not granted a waiver, the Department of Treasury shall do the following. They'll undertake an individualized and comprehensive internal review of the local unit of government's retirement system. They'll discuss changes or reforms that have been made with the local unit of government's designated officials, and then they will review actuarial projections, including trends and forecasts. So, what they would also do is, it's called, go to the next slide, please, it's called the PA 20202 Corrective Action Plan. So if, if we were in that status, the local unit has 180 days after determination of an underfunded status, to submit corrective action plans to Treasury. Treasury Board reviews and approves or denies a local unit's corrective action plan. If denied, local unit has 60 days to address reasons for denial. Some of the corrective action plans that could happen are, could be, in fact, retirement benefits, would be closing of the defined benefit plan, implementing multiplier limits, reducing or eliminating new accrued benefits. They call that bridging pensions. So for example, what you would, what could happen is, say I was employed for 15 years with the city, but I have another 10, 12 years till retirement. When I retire, if, if, if the plan was bridged, the first 15 years, I would receive my pension payment at the, well, for our instance, it would be the 2.5 multiplier, and then, for the remainder of time with the city, if this happened, then they would be, receive the benefit at the lesser amount, if you had to bridge the, if you had to bridge the gap. So that's what, that's what that is. A number, some communities have done that, and it's something that, I don't, I'm not sure we need to do at this point, but down the road, who knows what could happen, it's something that if, if, if things got out of hand, because there's some things that could happen that, that were impacted, that's something that could be, unfortunately, might be something we have to look at here, but at this time, I don't believe we do. There's also the OPEB issue, I'm going to address the OPEB issue in another day, but that's also an issue as well. So, what has the city done so far to try and reduce the unfunded liability? As I stated, beginning in July of this year, through the help of negotiation with IBEW and the Internal Order of Police, all employees began contributing 7% from 5% of their pay towards pension costs. This automatically, what this automatically does is reduces the city's contribution to MERS, but what it allows the city to do is still continue to contribute the same amount as they were before those funds were, what they were doing before, so, but those funds are placed in a separate account, and basically, at the end of the year, you make principal payments on the unfunded liability, and MERS allows us to do that, and that's what we, that's what we, that's what we did. And then also, for the past three years, this unfunded liability issue has really been addressed since, really got kicked in around 2015, and for the past three years, the city has been paying an additional amount in their, their required contribution to, to reduce the unfunded liability gap. And what they did was, they, they gave a community two options, they gave you a phased-in amount for over five years, you paid a little bit more each year, until you got to the full amount that they, that they felt you needed to meet, in order to have your pension, pension liability eliminated, eliminated by 2038. Because of our finances, the way they are, for the last three years, we have been just paying the phased-in amount extra into the, into the pension system, however, in the upcoming fiscal year, I'm going to be looking at trying to make the full contribution amount, rather than the phased-in amount, because I think it's something that we're going to, we're going to have to eventually address at some point. This also gets into, I'm going to have a discussion about accrued actuarial liabilities. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, I'm going to have to explain it from here. So, what this slide, what this sheet says, and I don't know if you got it on your, it doesn't look like you guys got it in your email, what I said.
You can, you can bring it up, but you can.
Yeah, okay. Well, so, for the last 15 years, this shows us, this shows us what our liabilities are, what our assets are, and what our unfunded liability is, what the sheet basically shows us. So, if you look at 2003, we had an accrued actuarial liability of about $7.7 million, but we only had about $5.6 million in assets. So, that made us, we'll call it 73% funded, and we had about a $2 million unfunded liability in 2003. So, not uncommon, that's actually 73%, that's probably better than a lot of communities in the state, from what I, from what I see. Over time, that liability has increased, but over time, the, the assets that we've, that we've had in the system have also increased. But when you get to 2015, if you look at 2014, we had about a $12.7 million actual accrued liability, and we only had about $9.3 million in assets, so we're still about 73% funded, and it's not good. But, what happened was in the next year, when MERS reduced the rate of return, our liability went up, now this is the whole system, including Lake Power, our liability went up $1.8 million, and, I'm sorry, $1.6 million, and during that time also, while we were still seeing increased assets into our system, it was less than, in years prior, because the economy had crashed, what they do is, it's called smoothing, where they will take, rather than do individual market returns every year, and how much the market returns, they basically smooth your amount over like four years, as to, that determines how much your, your assets have increased. So like, for example, if you have, if you had high fluctuations in the, in the market, where some years you had really high years and low years, there's an actuarial formula that basically smoothes that out. But what happened was, when that, when that liability went from one point, from roughly just $113 million to over $14 million, that was about a $1.6 million increase, and that's all unfunded liability. So our unfunded liability went from, from about $3.4 million to $4.8 million, and it's grown a little bit more to where we're about, and we're about 5.2 right now. So, this is, but what it's also done is, where we were at, we were as high as 77% in 2008, actually, in 2010, we were 77%, now we're at, we're at 64%. So, because of the rate of return that MERS set for us, that's caused an issue for us as well, and that's where we get the unfunded liability issue. If you go to the next slide, please. So, what this shows you, what this, what this shows you is, what this shows you is what our rate of return would be, based on different assumptions of the rate of return. So if we had a five point, if, if MERS reduced our rate of return to say 5.75%, we would go from 64% today, or roughly a $5.4 million liability, unfunded liability, to a 52% funded funded system, with over a $9 million unfunded liability. And what it would also do is, it would, it would increase our costs. Currently, we pay, the total employer's contribution now is about $47,000 a month, where if we had, if we was reduced to the 5.75 mark, it would reduce to 71, it would, it would contribute, increase our cost monthly to $71,389. So, for example, I'll just kind of spell this out a little bit better, is if, I got it on the slide, it was hard to see. Okay, it's up there. So, a reduction of 1% in the rate of return is $135,000 extra a year for the city in our contribution, and a reduction of 2% in return is $296,000 extra a year, and as I stated, they re-lower the rate of return in 2015. So we go to the next slide. So, try and explain this a little bit better, how did we get to, how did we get to this, to this point? So every year, we get this in our actuarial, and it, I wish it sounded a little bit in the way. So, so, what has gone on, though, through the number of years, is, this is, what this reflects is how much the city contributes, how much the employee contributes, how much the, the investment we've received every year from, from being into the, into the pension fund, and then also our benefit payments, and then, what that shows is how much money we basically have on hand. So, we've gone from, since 2007, we've gone from about $7.5 million in assets to about $9.4 million in assets. And what, what is actually happening is, is now, because of all of these changes, we are contributing more, and if you, if you, if you can see it on your slide, or even in your actuarial report that they gave you, you can see that our contributions have gone up quite a bit from the employer, and also the employee, and, but benefit payments are going up higher, we have more people retired, we're getting to the point now where we, we were going to have some, pretty soon, we're going to have more, we're going to have more employees retired in the system than actually paying into the system, and that's, that's going to be an issue as well. So, we go to the next slide.
I have one question, though, if we could go back there. Employee contributions are 118 in 2007, you're 88,002, so they've gone down.
Yeah, actually, they have gone down. You're right, they have. You're right. But, they are going to be, I mean, I know for this year, they will be going up, so, and I don't, and you have to remember, this is the whole system, too.
Right, no, I was.
One of the things also, is do the employees, Steve, do the employees who are in the hybrid, do they contribute anything?
No.
Okay.
They, they contribute to their defined contribution plan, which would not be reflected in this.
The rate of return for MERS was adjusted last in 2015?
Correct. And they are talking, they are, they haven't done it yet, but they are talking about reducing the rate of return again.
Right.
I'll get that in a minute.
Yeah, I have one other question. On page five of this report, we went from being, at the end of 2016, we were 65% funded, we lost a percent.
Correct.
If they didn't change the rates, how did we go backwards a whole point?
Because the, the actuarial, the actuarial liability is going up. There's still an actuarial liability that's going up that's causing that. We haven't, we haven't, even though they phased in, we haven't corrected that yet. That's something that's gonna take us a little more time. So, and I'll get into that in a second.
Also, that 7 and 3/4% rate of return, they're assuming on our assets, we're gonna get that return every year. So if we have nine plus million dollars, you know, 10 million, 7 and 3/4 would be 775,000, so slightly under 775,000 in market gains they would expect us to receive in a year. You can see under the Investment Income Valuation Assets column, in 2016, we earned $454,000, less than the projected rate of return. So whenever we don't receive the 7 and 3/4 rate of return on our assets that they had expected, now our required contribution payments between the employee and employer go up, and our, and our percentage ratio goes down. Does that make sense? There's a lot playing into it.
So what's, what this here is, this is just for the city. If, if we were to stay at the 7.75, what you would see is substantial increases in employer contribution over the next 20 years. Currently, the last, according to, in 2017, we, the required annual contribution was, for the city, just this is the general fund employees, general employees, was $313,000, and then this, and then this year that began, it went up to $340,000. And it's gonna keep going up every year substantially, it's probably gonna go up about $30,000, $40,000 a year annually for the next 18 years. You're not gonna see a drop off in, in contribution until 2038. And then that's when you would, you would go from nearly $800,000 a year in contribution, actually over $800,000 a year, to then you'd be going to $200,000 a year, but it wouldn't be until 2030, it'll be 2040, it's all right, because then that would actually happen. So if you go to the next slide. So what are some of our options to address future funding issues? We could close the defined benefit pension to all new hires and provide them a defined contribution style retirement plan. This would, would need additional investigating, as there is a cost increase upfront to close the pension. If you recall, we looked at this in the, when we did, when we did the, the last contracts, and really the cost to close those systems in the short term, they're not, we can't afford to do it. It's, it was actually, from the, from the numbers that MERS gave us, it was actually cheaper to stay in the pension plan than actually close it. But like I said, that was, that was MERS numbers, and we were, we were in a, we were in a very short period of time to try and get the contracts addressed. So that's something that, if that were to happen, we'd want, probably have, if you were looking at doing that, that's something that you probably wanna have an independent actuarial investigation on that.
I thought eight or 10 months ago, we talked about it here, we were no longer doing defined benefit.
No. Nope, we still do defined benefit. And then we require higher employee contribution. The current employee contribution is 7%, which could be increased more to help improve the stability of the fund. If this was an option, the city would hold its level of funding rather than lower it due to employees picking up a larger share of the liability. So remember, as I said before, every time the employee's contribution increases, you know, reduces the employer's. That's how MERS has it set up. But what you can do is, you can, you can, you can figure out what those funds are, set them aside, and make the principal payments. That's what, that's what we just started doing to try and reduce this. And I actually have to have MERS come back and, and recalculate this for us now that we will start doing this, that's something I'm gonna ask MERS to do. The city could also contribute extra payments, but this would put stress on funding other services or initiatives. Other changes that impact existing employees but only deal with future service. At this time, I don't recommend that. Until, until we know what MERS is gonna do with the values, until they start having more, more fluid policy discussions with the, with the, with the communities that are in MERS, I would, I would hold off on that. Another option you could do is you could seek bonding to address the liability. But this doesn't take into account future market trends, and it may not address your future costs. But what it would also do is require all new hires to go to a defined contribution plan. That's what, that would be required if you did go to a, if you did seek a bond to fund that unfunded liability. Now, we're at 64% funded. We are on a path in 20 years to resolve this issue. It's gonna be costly, but we are on a path now to resolve this issue.
How are we on a path to resolve it if we lost a percent of last year?
Because you're gonna lose a couple more percents before you start going up, because we're gonna be increasing the contributions.
Just the employer contribution?
Yes. And the employer, yeah. You're gonna go down before you go up, is what's gonna happen. That's, and that, and our, and our, and our trend show that, the actuarial report shows that, even though we are making, we will be making additional contributions, we will go down, we may actually, we may actually trigger that 60%, we might fall at 59. If we fall at 59, that's when the treasury stuff comes in. But I would argue that because of what we're doing now, that we have met our requirement to address the liability issue. This is a long-term issue, this isn't something that you can fix in a year. This is something that is gonna, is gonna take many years to fix. Any other questions? So that's all I have about this, and I just, I just wanted to give everyone an update as to what we're gonna have of this, and I was, at this time, I'm not really, other than doing what we're doing. I'd like to see where, how this is working right now with us doing the increased employee contribution and, and reserving the funds. I'd like to see where this takes us, and see what MERS does with the rate of return before we even, before we start thinking of what we need to do next. I know, I, I anticipate that someday, we are gonna have to change this, but I wanna do it, I wanna do it conservatively, and I wanna, and I wanna do it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna jump the gun, so to speak, before we, before we have all the information we need to make a sound decision.
Right. The rest of the world has gotten away from defined benefit, and I'm 99% sure we discussed this a little bit, because we did it at Lowell Light Power back in 2012. And the city needs to do that. I mean, those of us in the private sector to, at a salary of $65,000 a year to get a $4,000 a month benefit, that, that's a heck of a retirement package. And that's great, I'm not trying to take anything away from the people that are here and have that, but we can't keep giving away these benefits that are over the top rich. The cities and financial hardships themselves with roads we have to fix and other things. I know the state's gonna cause us to do this, but I just don't see how it can cost more to get off of the bandwagon than to stay on it with defined contribution versus benefit. We will address that down the road.
Anybody else?
In your report, did it say what the 34% behind is, how many millions of dollars that is, Mike?
34, um, yeah.
Before, we're at 64, these were 36.
We're at 5.4 million is our unfunded liability. That's with Light and Power. The city's is about 3.4.
And we have 20 years to get that up to the 100%?
At this time, yeah, hypothetically, MERS is gonna have to change that, because MERS is gonna have to, because what's happening, we're not alone. What's happening is cities across the state, because they've changed, changed this basically late in the game, is causing, is causing strain in a lot of cities. And a lot of cities are in the same boat we're in, they're trying, they're, they're looking at closing, and we look at closing it. In the short term, it is a substantial cost upfront for a number of years until, once you, once you close it, then, then the costs go down. But it, it's something that in the short term, next five, 10 years, is gonna be over and above the costs that we're contributing now to, to resolve that issue. And that, that will, that will impact service delivery if we have to do that. So that's something to keep in mind. Might end up being, we may end up having to consider at some point, we may have to consider going for a bond for this, but you have those risks as well. Number of communities across the state have done bonds, and I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with it, because you don't get anything with a bond, when you, when you, most bonds, when you do seek bonds, you seek them for, for infrastructure, so you see something for it. You're not seeing anything from us. So that's something that, these are things you're gonna have to think about, and these are, these are issues that we're gonna have to tackle, so.
Question from Mike. So Light and Power has a plan to move forward to get 100% funded through some, at additional, putting some additional money into it, plus we have our debt retirement from Bell River and from Campbell, and several years they're gonna be over with, and so we're thinking of taking that money and going right to that. Will that then keep, the overall keep, because you, one, you're talking separate, but then you're talking together, will that, if Lowell Light and Power becomes more fully funded, will that keep the number up above the 60%?
That's a good question. I, I'd probably have to ask MERS that question, but your, your liability is about $1.8 million.
Right, it's much less, it's much less than the city.
But overall, it would, I have to think that percentage-wise, it would, it would keep us over the, it would keep us over the 60%.
Right.
But I'd have, I'd have to talk to MERS about that, I don't, I don't know the answer. Something I'd like to do is, even if we could put $100,000 a year in addition to what we're talking about, just to, 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 to get this down, but the problem with that is, if you do that, that's gonna affect service delivery. What service do we wanna cut to do that amulet?
Correct. And that's kinda where Light and Power is going to, for the next four years, is looking at putting an additional 100,000 into it. And then with that, then Campbell Plant, correct Steve?
Correct.
This will be, our debt will be over with with that, instead of, and just taking that, that amount and continuing that debt, and just taking it and moving it over into the MERS, which would then, in several years, get us to be fully funded. I just wanted to see if that then keeps, helps to keep your numbers, the city numbers, above that 60%.
I, I do believe, maybe 85, 90% confidence, Lowell Light and Power, the city's plan in terms of the state filing is combined, so they look at the combined funding percentage. However, we do, Lowell Light and Power is a separate division within the plan, and Lowell Light and Power's assets cannot be borrowed to pay pension benefits by the city and vice versa. So.
But you paying yours down helps us, so.
Correct, staying out of the underfunded status, it does.
And something else to remember too, you know, with the city, we do have some debt coming up offline in the next year. For example, the, we would contribute, we would, we would contribute from the, from the city to the Local Streets Fund. We had about a $45,000 bond we were paying annually to the Local Streets that comes offline this year. So I could look at that and maybe try and put some money savings away, even if it's a little bit, to try and start nickel-ing this out. Any sale of property, if we do sell some property here, I know we're talking, you know, we were talking about with the chamber, I was, I would, I would look at either A, using that as a one-time payment towards the pension, or setting that aside for, for retiring health care issues. It's gonna be one of those things that you're gonna probably wanna do with it. So that's something that, that's something that, this is something that we inherited, and it's, you know, but it's a, it's a long, it's a long process, it's not a, it's not something you can fix in a year, so.
Anything else for Mike or Steve? All right. Board of Commission reports, Mr. Handfield.
Laro met on July 11, and Phase 1A from G Drive to M21 is complete, and the local contractor, Ryan, excavating, wrapped that up, pavement and a little bit of seeding and stuff is done. The good news is, using a local contractor, the invoice came somewhere between $25,000 and $35,000 under what it was bid at. Part of that was the retaining wall on the corner of G Drive and Alden Nash, didn't have to be quite as tall, the soil was clay and a little more stable than predicted, but that's a good thing, we were able to use a local contractor and helped with jobs unemployment and saved the city somewhere $25,000 to $35,000, or the trails, not, not the city. Just to recap then, Impact Love Week, they did have 606 volunteers, did 1,300 hours, and did a lot of things around the Baptist Church, it was their second year in helping us, and they had 40 volunteers that put 112 hours into working on the trails. And as far as the Phase 2, the connection, both sides of the city, there's no response yet from MDOT, which Dave Austin felt was good, that they had good information from us and they weren't looking for more answers. The DNR Trust Fund is in process, we expect to hear from them in August or September. By October 1st, we need to have our easements and local funding in place, and December would be hopefully final approval on that. And I think that covers the, Laro.
Thank you. Mr. Junior?
Finding Commission, we gave King Relling to go ahead, to go ahead and put the new warehouse and power pack facility up. Gotta do some landscaping and stuff, but other than that, they're good to go. Light and Power, we just, basically same old stuff, we just talked about what's going on and what needs to be going, and moved on.
Mr. Phillips?
I don't have anything to report.
Mr. Stone?
I don't either, Fire Authority was canceled, we'll be meeting in August.
For sure, any discussion questions, issues with the monthly reports? Michael, City Manager Report?
I enjoyed attending Riverwalk over the weekend, I was there overnight, every day during the events, and it was a good time. I see the mayor, they have one by the fall.
Still win. Still counts.
But I don't, I don't know what the official, what the official ruling was yet on that, but I don't know if there is an official ruling on that.
Well, Club's not here, so.
So it was a good event, I think Liz does an excellent job managing that event, she does, does a really good job, and brings in a lot of people to the community, and I think that was a, it was a really good event this year. Next week, we, the, the news feature show on Wood TV, Eight West is gonna be featuring Lowell businesses in the Lowell community the entire week. They're gonna be doing, they're gonna be, I think they're gonna be in town filming a number of things and, and doing some, I think they're doing some feature stories but highlighting a number of the businesses. I know Liz and I on Monday are gonna be, being taped on, on an episode of Eight West to talk about Lowell. I wanna thank Perry again for the carpeting. Actually, today was the first time I walked up here, because I did not make a decision on any of the carpeting, I didn't want any to, I get blamed for every other decision around here, I didn't wanna be blamed for this one, so I delegated that. But it was a, it was a, it was a, Perry International job worked real well with us, I did a real good job, and I was real happy with it. Also, we are starting, and one of the nice things too with this carpeting is now I don't trip when I walk. And so this is good, but we're also doing some other technological upgrades. Today, we, we, we put a screen and we did the same setup that Lowell Light Power does with their, with their, with their conference room, we did that today, we purchased the items today to do that in the, in the Flat River Room downstairs, and we're still looking at some Lowell cost technology upgrades here in Council Chambers, because the, we need to make an upgrade from these screens, we just need to do something a little bit more.